Good evening. Today is July 16, 2015. The Contract and Property Committee will convene. The time is 5:40. Roll call, please.
Okay. Counselor Baker.
Present.
Counselor Thomas. Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
And your one.
All right. First order of business, we'll start Resolution Number 35-15. Can you read Resolution 35-15 into the record?
Resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Runkie of Northern Ohio, Inc., for the collection and disposal of the city's solid waste for the period from August 18, 2015, to August 17, 2016, and declaring an emergency for health and safety reasons.
All right. This was requested by the Public Service Department. It will be sponsored by myself. Wanted to open up for discussion at this point.
You have another counselor?
Resolution 35-15. Ms. Hemmings?
Yes.
We have all the contractual stuff taken care of?
Yes. And it's been pretty much completed.
Okay.
Disattached.
All right. There's no peat language in there anymore?
Oh, yeah.
Just waste collection.
We don't want to see dramatic increases over the next seven months.
One year.
Seven months.
No, just...
Any surcharges. All right.
I do have to say this, though. There was a higher number of households that was provided by the building official than the water department has. So, we're trying to negotiate lower or fewer number of houses, which might save us $15,000 a month.
That would be great. And that was a concern a while back. Does the water department coordinate? Because if the water is off, that means we're not collecting.
Right.
But yet, we're collecting. And tonnage really means something when it comes to the number of households that we have. Yes, ma'am?
We were at the last, when we talked about all this, at one of the last meetings, we were supposed to be seeing what did the administration do about the buildings? Because a certain amount of apartments was supposed to be dealt with. So, where is that?
They've been totally excluded from this council.
Okay, the apartment buildings?
Yes. They have to pay for their own waste collection now on. And what the discrepancy was, was that the tax records had the 5,300, and the water department only has 4,000 households. So, that's the almost 1,300 household housing residential discrepancy.
But it was stated, and I don't know if you recall, I think somewhere between 2010 and 2011, that the commercial buildings either had to have a separate agreement with the wasteholder? Because we had some people that our wasteholder was picking up for, and they weren't, you know...
That's what she said. We eliminated all of that.
We eliminated all of those people.
Yes, in this country.
Okay. That's excellent. So, it potentially may save us somewhere in the $10,000.
Yeah. And one more question. This is just for... Was there any attempt to do anything about recouping the monies from the, those that use the services of Runkie that wasn't supposed to?
That's a question that I've been asked. I don't know.
What do you mean, "haven't been asked"? We asked you at the last meeting that since they weren't even supposed to go up that high, and they weren't, so according to the law department, Mr. Riley and all that, they weren't even supposed to be up that many units.
Units.
Yes.
Oh.
Between one and eight.
Right, right. No, but I think it will be difficult since before, the prior contract was just left by tonnage and didn't have units tied to it, no per unit. So, I think it would be probably a calculating nightmare to try to go back and see. I don't think the Runkie...
Well, you can't do it now. Ask the question, was there any attempt?
Oh.
You know, the law was attempt to recoup monies? Because Mr. Johnson, the Director Johnson, said it was, you know, he had considered it, and I didn't know if he might have done.
No, not that I know of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Resolution 35-15. Would like to refer that to the Agenda Review for approval.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Glad you asked for coming in late. If we could go back to the minimum monthly unit count, $5,319. Where did you get that number from?
From the tax department, County Audit Office. But the water department has the number of 4,000, approximately 4,000 something. And so, we're trying to resolve the discrepancy now so that we can say $15,000.
So, with that, if it's my understanding with that, the water bill has sewer charge on it? And where is the trash charge attached to the residence?
It's not connected to the residence, per se. It's the only houses that are being serviced are going to be those that have water, that whether there's water, where the water is.
Okay. So, in essence, if you have a water bill, you have a trash bill?
Yes.
So...
Well, not a trash bill we pick up.
So, if you were theoretically thinking of it, the trash bill would be in the water bill, even if it's not stated as a trash bill?
I'm not... We don't charge for the trash pickup. That's part of a public municipal service. But it's a service charge that you have to be on there. It's been on there. Is that what you're talking about?
That's the $11 charge. But I think that's connected to the sewer, so...
Yeah, that's...
It's a direct billing, and they don't really normally see it. So, I don't, you know, know of any monetary amount should be discussed because it's already been in effect under original contract.
But here's what I'm getting at. The number here, $5,319, should be based off of the water department's number and not the tax department's number. So, I would be more comfortable with that number here and then the total that we're going to pay them based off that number, as opposed to the number that you currently have on there.
I disagree, because somebody should, could be paying tax for a property and the water still be on there to be making, as opposed to whatever the water department is saying that it's an occupied structure and they're currently putting out trash. Necessarily does it not have to have, you know, residents within that structure? So, that's why they have that number. I have to believe that their number is an occupied structure number versus a tax number. So, they're trying to find a median, whereas we only charge per the unit of people who put out trash. So, that number is far less than the tax department.
Let's go backwards a little bit, if you may. The number here is from where?
It is from the Audit Office, County Audit Office.
And this number is from what?
This number relates, is based upon the number of houses, the tax...
Per resident on the unit.
So, now we want to base it on the water department. But the thing is, the water department number has to be calculated over some months because we just, I just met with Smithley and the Finance Director on Tuesday when Jack told us about this discrepancy. And so, we're currently researching it. We're having Runkie research it. But they have to actually perform the contract before they'll know what the exact numbers are.
And included in there, we have to move on.
We can move on.
But in there, it has to be losses and gains. So, you know, residents may move out, residents may move in. It is a fluctuating number if we're talking in units.
If you'll allow me to finish, Chairman, what I was getting at, the, for example, on my street, there are 10 houses, and they're all in demolition. They've been vacant for over 15 years. They're still in private hands, so the county is still charging their taxes, right? So, those will show up in here.
Right.
But they won't show up on the water.
Right.
So, there'll be no trash.
At those units.
Right. But we're going to pay these guys as if they stocked at these units.
That's what we had been doing, but we're not going to do that.
Yeah, do that.
But we are, because it's in the $5,319. I'm sorry.
We're trying to modify that.
I'm not even in your committee.
Right, right.
We're trying to modify that now, so that... That's what I was just going to say. You can't approve anything until you have a, some sort of side thing that's going to let us know that you're negotiating this.
Well...
And there's got to be a number there.
I know, but Runkie doesn't know it. We don't know how many houses actually have water on. And this will be a basis, and it's a gentle person's agreement that they're going to reduce the cost if they are not picking up $5,319.
Director, I'm going to go ahead and...
Can I ask one more question?
Nice question.
Who's going to be the, who's going to monitor this? This is what I'm asking.
Options. Jack and Smith.
Okay. All right.
All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to have to rescind this until we have the accurate language and number. But, you know, is there any convening of the council?
No, I don't really think you're going to need to do that because you're on the edge of not having a pickup.
All right. I need something from you ASAP, from the law department, saying that there's some other consideration or exploration into this number and/or cost savings.
That you're working on.
That needs to come on letterhead, not through email, just through email. Letterhead stating that you are going back to Runkie and petitioning whatever your petition as far as the unit's...
Okay.
Does that do it? All right. So, we're just going to keep it agenda review. All right. Resolution 36-15.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease from Price International Industries Incorporated for the premises located at 16100 New England Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, 44112, for a five-year term beginning on September 1st, 2015.
Do these persons represent here today?
Yes.
All right. Before we go forward, as requested by Mayor Gary A. Norton, Jr., sponsored by myself, would you like to come up and address the council? Like to state your name?
My name is Pastor Joseph Prue. We are local pastors and pastors now. Been pastoring 23 years. We have been in East Cleveland for five. We currently share a building with Life Changes Church on 1409 Hayden Avenue. I don't know if I should spiritualize my conversation, but let me say, from my perspective...
Speaker.
Okay. It was not our choice initially to come to East Cleveland. We had circumstances that brought us, but we feel led to be here. We've been looking to move for a while. We've had other options to move, but we have a significant number of people who are members of our congregation who are East Cleveland residents. So, we limited our search for a new building to the city of East Cleveland. And we've been looking now for about two years. We're a very broad-based ministry in that, you know, we do spiritual things, break the stick and get people safe. We're also very community-oriented. Right now, we feed about 100 people a month. We just came into agreement with another group called Love Truck, which will allow us to feed 300 people a month and give away 100 bags of groceries. We also do school programs. We're putting together something called our Senior Care Program, where our people will come assist the seniors once a month. We understand those situations. We have a lot of seniors in our germs that can't get kept in check, that can't get things like that. So, we will provide those kinds of services. We will also kind of re-initiate some of the prior services as we get a chance to get development, get some understanding, you know, as to what those services are that we're able to provide. So, we're very focused on being a best. We also, I'm a former drug addict, maybe 43 years since I've done that, but nevertheless, I understand that. So, we also have another program, which is the Christian Rehabilitation Program, where we work with local addicts, not in-house, but on a continuous basis, in helping develop them. And we also have a job program where we teach young people how to fill out applications, present themselves presently for school and for, I'm sorry, not for school, but for employment opportunities. Now, we certainly have a much broader agenda of things that we want to do. We've been limited in that we've shared another building with another church, so it's very difficult. The building we have has three churches in it. So, our ability to do some things has been very limited. But our agenda is, we're very, our theme is, we have a team called Justice With Science Following. So, we believe in the prophetic, the healing people and all that, but we believe in being advocates for justice and mercy and having compassion. And we think the building gives us the way of all to do that. We would not be the kind of church who comes there and all you know that we do is service. We do far more than that. We've been very limited, you know, by space capacity in that. We also have two schools. We have what we call a School of the Prophets, where we teach that particular aspect. That school is 21 years old, runs nine months a year. We have an online school where we train, minister. So, we're highly community-involved. As we had discussed with the councilman and with others, that we're willing to come in, take in the building as is. We already had the opportunity to have someone come and examine the heating condition, so we know what that is. They quoted us on that. They gave us a general number. It could be much higher, but we've already begun to raise money and set money aside to repair that, to take on those responsibilities, take on whatever structural responsibility that we need to take on in the building to ensure the building. We've already got a quote and been approved tentatively for insurance pending and approval from you guys. So, we're willing to cause that building not to be an ISO in the city, not to be a liability, but a place that is functional, does Christian worship, but extends Christian worship from just the spiritual to the practical things. And so, that's why we desire to be in that building. We think we can make a big difference and have an impact on the city.
All right. I love the fact that you're community-based. I, you know, I admonish the thought of wanting to stay in the city of East Cleveland and keep your ministry here. I would also like to inquire, and I know you've had some conversation with another councilperson, but I would like for you to talk, put on record verbally, the monetary value, because I don't want to state, I want you to state what was discussed.
Okay. Give me the monetary value of the...
For the lease stuff.
Okay. I think it's fair.
It says a number in here, so you guys discussed that at some point with...
Yeah, yeah. We discussed it with, I hope I'm not moving there, I shouldn't be, but we discussed it with Mrs. Smithley.
Okay.
And it was the king. We asked to pay, come in paying $2,000 a month, to give us a few months to do the repairs we need to do. You know, our estimation, by the time we do everything, could be well over $10,000, $15,000.
All right.
We have a hard number on the heating and air conditioning repairs.
What amount of time is that?
What amount of time is it that... We're asking for five years.
No, I'm talking about to get it...
Five months.
Five months?
Yeah.
Were those submitted to the city, the cost itemization for the repairs?
What we were able to determine, we do have a quote for the heating and air. Yes.
I would like that.
Okay. I'll let you I get that for you.
All right. And please just send it to me when it's received. So, this would be the total use of the building?
Right.
Total use?
Other than the basement, I believe.
All right. And now I have to defer it to the law director. That is a lease. Now, if we have a function or venue, do we still operate?
You mean, it'll be, they'll have possession of it?
Possession? So, they're in possession without us interfering?
Yeah, right.
All right. So, all right. So, if people wanted to hold a function or a community, because you have that little open corridor where they used to eat at, you are obliging the community?
Yeah.
That's where I was getting at. So, I didn't know who would be the...
I want to see where that is about, pardon me. I just wanted to see where it is, the amount of time it's taking to deal with the, getting it ready. I don't see it anywhere. Show me.
It, there... It's not necessarily in here, however, the insurance language is in here. But as far as the, I know the utilities conversation is in there, but it does not state...
What's the conversation?
Huh? It does not state the repair. It says alterations, but it doesn't have the timeline that he just disclosed. So, if you have something other than that, Law Director?
Oh, okay. The rent abatement period, for a period of five months.
Oh, this is called rent abatement. Okay. All right. Then you have it.
That's fine.
Do you have any more before we go to questions? Do you have anything else?
No, that's all I wanted to say.
No, I'm sorry.
The preparing of...
Do you have, do you have anything else?
No. We hope you guys can work together with the city. I think it will be a real benefit to the city.
All right. Thanks, Pastor. Council.
Thanks, Council Chair. On, I appreciate the time to talk and to weigh in on a lot of this. And I talked to Tracy and Pat yesterday and had them look up what my committee is charged with. And a lot of these things also fall under my committee. So, I appreciate the flexibility to come into your committee and talk at length about some of these things. Even, and we talked yesterday to Tracy about including me on some of these, because, I mean, these are right in my committee.
She told me.
Right. So, forgive me for adjusting the lease as much as I did, and the lease you have in front of you does not have everything...
Oh, they got copies of the commercial one as well, the one you have.
Absolutely. But the one you have in front of you does not have everything that mine has, right? But I will, we'll make this available. Again, it is just a rough draft, as you can see it on there. So, what we discussed with the pastor, and again, it's here, is a rent abatement for a period of five months to zero out the rent, give him time to bring it up to code so that he can get an occupancy permit, open up a new business, right? Three to five months. We weigh in on the far side. Just give him five months, right? I mean, we're in the seventh month now. We've had no activity over there once in a couple of months. So, it's in this one, as well as some other things that we discussed. And again, this is just a rough draft, and most of it, we'll move forward as is. We need to come up with...
This is going forward. Thank you, Pastor. Hold on. Counselor President. You know, I am completely okay with the level of interaction that you provide, you know, in trying to weigh in on things. You know, I had no idea that you met with the law director regarding a contract that would be before this committee. And Law Director, I had no idea from your end that you were meeting with someone regarding a contract. I have this lease agreement, which is technically our contract. I would like to caution you guys, and while I respect everybody's committee, let the authority rest within the committee that is responsible for overseeing it with input from all other parties or entities. No discredit to you guys. I appreciate you guys moving forward, but we, I pride ourselves, we pride ourselves in doing things in order. I will never, ever usurp anybody sitting here as a release to your own particular committee. And so, don't do it.
It's not about you serving.
I'm just saying that we...
Certain things fall on different committees, so we should be flexible enough to share.
It's not about flexibility. It's about order that's been here, and it has not changed. It has not changed.
But what happens when something falls into...
Okay. And I would respect it, more or less, you know, and I'm an integrity-based gentleman.
Absolutely.
I would respect it if I would have been told you were there.
Told I was there.
Talking about this, you arranged a meeting, and I had to find out about it after the fact.
I wasn't in the meeting with the lawyer.
Okay.
With the city lawyer.
Your email communication stated to her that you wanted to talk to her about that and that you adjusted some things within that. All right? That is not technically your place. And if it was your place, discuss it here first. Do you understand that?
Did you see the lease, the original lease that you sent out?
I understand it. Whether it was in poor taste, poor condition, bad language, whatever.
That did a spell check.
Excuse me for a second.
You just don't understand, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, can we move on?
Yeah, we're going to move on, but I just wanted to make that known, that we all have our roles and responsibilities. And my role and responsibility says to preside over such things like that. And if I wanted to defer it to General Services and Administration, I will do so once we agree that that should happen. All right? Pastor, we appreciate you, sir. I welcome you to the city. I see no reason why this would be held up. I'm going to refer to the Agenda Review. Definitely keep this city in prayer, and me in particular. If there be no more questions, we have some...
It's not no more questions. I want to know the wrap-up of this from the law director. You have to have that.
Yeah. Before we go forward, and thank you for reminding me, I need whatever it is you're going to be fixing your approval to. I need that.
Okay.
I need that almost ASAP.
Okay.
I don't know what it is. Do you have that?
Not that exact copy.
Okay. So, what am I referring? Because now I have to hold off, and it's not because of you. I have to hold off now. If I don't have exactly what it is you're going to fix your authority to, what are you going, what are you going to fix your signature to?
If I may jump in here, this document...
No, you cannot. I'm talking to the law director.
This document that I have has made one or two changes from the document that you have in front of you.
Sir, you're out of order. I'm talking to the law director, that she needs to tell me. You're not the law director.
Let's move this thing forward.
I am going to move it forward, but you're not the law director. Law director, I need...
I will make sure by Monday at 5:00, you have the Runkie letter, as well as the update, you know, the update to the commercial lease.
What do you want to do?
All right. All right.
I'm just, I'm wondering what you're finna do?
I'll have to get some water.
Jumping up like that.
I'll have to get something to drink.
I'm finna get out the way and get my piece out, you know?
My drawback, my drawback is this. I have to have exactly what it is you're going to approve, coming from the law director. And it does not allow me to carry this on to the Agenda Review. That's not, that's almost borderline a discrepancy, because I am looking at something, and we're looking at something, and I would have said that I looked over this lease, and it's not the lease that you're going to send to me.
It say rough draft on it.
All right. Well, I need to...
It say rough draft, so it's not the final draft.
I need the rough draft that you are approving.
When she approves it, the rough draft will come off of it. And it won't be a rough draft anymore.
Well, I can't have...
You would sign something that says rough draft.
We have two different documents on the table.
All of them have rough draft on it.
And I just wanna make a statement, you cannot waive something without the rest of the committee looking. And usually, you don't waive the, the preparation that they're going to do, which is gonna take them five months. They know, the pastor knows how many months it's going to take him to prep, to prep that area and get through it. That's when he said he was going to do that. Now, I was looking for that, okay? It's need not be any waiving, we just give him what he asked to do.
Council President, excuse me, the original lease that came down from the law department had three months with an additional probability of two months. Let's just give them the five months.
I don't care.
I took the original lease and touched it up a little, just reformatted it, so that, that's all, so I didn't.
Did you waive anything?
No, nothing was waived because she was, she was giving them three months.
You said rent abatement.
That's.
Rent, but it was in the original lease that she sent down for three months with a probability of a two extra months. Let's just give them the five months and not worry about the probability, right?
Where is the rent abatement?
That's, that's not the original one, it came through on the email.
The original.
The original one came through on the email.
Yeah, the original one, you put behind.
This is not that funny, so I, I read that.
And what he's asking, what he's asking is let the law director do her job and give us a lease that we can approve and get through. If it's five months, three months, or what, the chair doesn't have it, and he hasn't discussed it. The pastor said he discussed it with Councilman King and, uh, uh, Chief Smithley. Here's a committee that has not discussed it.
My fellow councilmen, by the time the lease comes down, it will come from the law director and she will sign off on it because she will have approved it.
We don't have it now.
It says rough draft on it, it's not a finished copy.
That's not your call, that's the chair right there.
It says rough draft on every document that's on it.
You wanna make copies of it? It's not your call.
No, they have it on, they have it.
That's, that's, that's not the one they have, right?
Yeah, have you done another one?
Yeah, can we make copies of it?
No, no, I'd rather you do it and get it all done.
I think you're gonna change this part, I don't care.
It's only, it's only two parts, and it's still not finished 'cause we got a number, not number currently, some other formatting issues that have to be done.
Okay, but let her.
This is not the final document.
All right, I know it's not the final document, but the sub, do you understand what a committee is responsible to do? It's responsible for admitting, changing, discussing, that's our, I don't, it can be a rough draft typed on every, uh, section of the paper. I don't, that, that doesn't matter. But I, I, the bigger picture is that she is the law director, you don't touch contracts and adjust anything unless you're in this committee.
The bigger pictures that we're leasing the property.
I'm telling you that you don't touch anything until we discuss that in the committee, all right?
I, I touched it before it got to the committee.
All right, and that, now it's on hold because of, because of that intrusion.
And the reason I did that is because I'm a mechanic and I decided to fix the car before you got in it. If I would've just left it and let you drive the car, it would've broke down. Is there, is there a problem with me looking at it and helping out a law director in the department that's short-staffed? But she will approve it before it comes down, I don't see what the big problem is.
I just wanna know if they're finished.
Sir, don't touch enough of the lease unless we discuss it.
Are we, Pastor?
Yeah, they can have a seat, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna work out, fine-tune some things and make sure that this is ready so that you can get, get to work with your, your, your mission.
You heard, you heard the expression, you, you don't want sausage, you don't see sausage being made or if you would eat it.
This is where this happens at. All right, council, regular council meeting, it would've been all hashed out by then, but I had to make my point.
I, I got you.
All right, so we're gonna move forward, welcome to the city, you wanna add something, yes, sir?
Our timeline is important in that the weather's getting cold. And it gets that heating and air conditioning fixed, you know, it's critical for us.
We know the time is of the essence, Pastor, and, uh, being that you as a godly man, we gonna do what we can to help you along, okay?
I thank you so much.
Well, then can we, uh, Chairperson?
No, I have to, I, I can't.
Well, Council, this is written as a person's saying.
Yeah, we, we'll have it worked out by, by next meeting, um, to give you a time, timeframe or something like that. Uh, we have one more meeting set in, set in August. It, it's, the first reading happening next week, or the first reading next week. Then second reading will be, be in August and in the past, we'll have it back in. All right? Okay, but, but, I, I'm letting you, that was just some housekeeping discussion, all right? And I, it had to be had, all right.
Sorry, is that in sphere?
It, it's, uh.
Refer to the sphere?
It's placed, it's remaining committee into.
No, no, it's moving to a, to a general review. You're gonna hold it up because of what?
Or.
Order, it's being held up because of what?
You're out of order. Order is thirty-seven dash fifteen. I, I, I'll make the appropriate adjustments, sir.
Beautiful.
I, I'll make the adjustment. And, and they'll agree with me that we'll make the adjustments when, when appropriate to make sure that it passes the same night we bring it out. Okay, thanks, all right. Order is number thirty-seven, seven dash fifteen.
In order to authorize the mayor to enter into a written agreement with Coleman Trucking Incorporated for assistance in payment services and to issue writs, proceed orders to the city for all structures so approved, declaring an emergency.
All right, Director, uh, it's requested by Community Development Director, Director Leach.
You're next, moving up to the IC. For the council, Chair. It's actually, um, integrity, it's both, I don't, I don't have it in front of me because it's both of them.
We got, there are two separate, I'll give it to you.